I'd like to call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meetings, the Wednesday, February 21st, 2024, here in the boardroom. We have a roll call.
Chad, here.
Here.
Kendra Austin, here.
Ron Liberty, here.
Here.
Jaclyn Brown, here.
Here.
Nubs Ashford, here.
Here.
Brett Waller, here.
Here.
Linda Ying, right here.
Here.
Paul Prush, here.
Kevin Blake, here.
Please stand just face the flag. You don't have to be feeling guilty.
I feel like I'm being...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and billowing to the heavens.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role that our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students with the highest levels of achievement. This meeting is a formal event; professional conduct is the expectation for all of our candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. We start off every school board meeting with public comments to the board. Amy, did you have any sheets to bin? I do not. Anyone have a sheet or would like to speak at public comment this evening? Otherwise, we will get going with recognition from the board. I'd like to start off tonight as the board like to recognize Laura Crowsey's Astro for being chosen as Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction's January School Nutrition Superhero. Well-deserved recognition. Congratulations. I like to put everyone on the spot and sometimes I call random people. Since we're recognizing you...
No, just thank you very much.
Well, thank you for all that you do for the health and nutrition of all our students and staff.
Thank you.
Next this evening, the board would like to recognize Emma and Avery Hoff, seniors, twin sisters, and both setters who volleyball team.
In a week of each other, they both completed their 1,000th career assist. Emma completed hers on August 26, 2023 against Regis at the Mount East sprawl, and Avery completed hers September 2, 2023 against Edgar at the DC Everest Invitational. Congratulations, Emma and Avery. We're proud of your accomplishments. So, I did warn these two a little more than I did Laura. So, you tell a little bit something about being part of the volleyball program, being setters, and your accomplishments. I would appreciate that.
We've been playing with the same group of girls since we were little, and it's been always very exciting, being with a group of people that can help you accomplish your goal. And I love having that group of people I know that I'm gonna have fun with after school and have fun at all times of day.
Absolutely. Congratulations. And next, the board would like to recognize this evening Maya Ott, senior at Merrill High School. She has accomplished a lot in basketball, some remarkable feats as a matter of fact in her high school basketball career. Originally, I was bringing her gear on understanding she scored her 1,000th point down at DC Everest, but last night after scoring 53 points, 14 of which were three pointers, both school records, her total went to 1,128, which are school records. These milestones not only showcase her exceptional skills and dedication to the sport, but also marks a significant achievement in the history of our school's athletic program. Maya's journey into this achievement is a testament to her hard work, perseverance, and the unwavering support of her coaches, teammates, and her family. Her commitment to excellence will not enough the court serves as an inspiration to her peers and the entire Merrill community. We wish to extend our heartfelt congratulations to Maya for her dedication and for setting a high standard for future student athletes. Congratulations. You know what's next, right?
I couldn't accomplish any of these goals without my teammates or coaches. And like last night especially, like my teammates were the ones that got me the ball. And like, and because of that, I was able to break all these records, which is really great. And having like my coaches support me even after having like bad shooting games like really has helped to like build my confidence, which is what you need in sports.
Yeah, you've done a great job. Like I said, the board would like to recognize you. It was certainly fun as a community member to come down to Everest to see some games locally, just to see the support of the community and your team and coaches. It's fun listening to your coach, especially on senior nights say a few words. That's always good to see and good to hear. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening, we have our Student Board of Education representative reports. I know that'll be a tough act to follow, but we've got Brooke Ruddy and Max Black to share a few things going on at the high school as far as activities are concerned. So, Max or Brooke, take it away.
Yeah, so this week at MHS Raise Your Voices is hosting high this week. So, the club plans an assortment of activities such as putting sticky notes with optimistic messages on lockers, hanging mental health-related air fresheners on cars, and also making a banner filled with supportive thoughts written by fellow students. On Wednesday, the 28th, the annual Winter Fest will be taking place. To achieve Max's participation and get students involved, teachers and staff have gone all out to provide a huge variety of activities. Kids are hyped to go bowling, hit the slopes at Granite Peak, go to the Appleton Mall, and tons more. They like, there are so many activities to choose from. And then, as a junior, I can confidently say the ACT is coming up really fast. It's scheduled for March 12, and we plan to have an ACT boot camp on the 5th to prepare for it. The district has hired a company to come in during this time and give us students beneficial strategies to overcome common struggles students face. Hopefully, with this advantage, we can achieve the state average and our goal of 19.3. We've decided to return to a paper and pencil test as well. And then, band has a few upcoming events. On the 26th, we have our chamber concert for the community where we perform songs we've been practicing for district and hopefully state solo ensemble, which are also approaching fast. The local competition is taking place on March 2nd here in Merrill where we're gonna be hosting DC Everest and those meetings.
Hi, guys. To follow up with things that are coming super fast are, as you've probably seen on Facebook, our Blue Jay plans have been posted. And as a senior, this is, I don't know, just doesn't really feel real yet. So, this is a huge moment for our graduating class as they look to the future. This past Friday, our MHS choir put on an amazing performance of Dinner on the Shelf. This was an opportunity for the students to raise money for their choir program where they had solos, trios, and different kinds of groups sing. It varies, I think most of them were Disney songs. And I can personally attest to how breathtaking this event was because I started bawling when Gracie Lesser performed her very first public solo. This was an amazing night for our students as well as their family and friends. And as we start to near the end of winter sports, like you had mentioned, our wrestling team has finished their season with a success sending eight varsity athletes to sectionals. The girls' team had their first playoff game last night where, as you also said, Maya Ott had an amazing game as long along with all the other girls. They are going to Ashland later in this week. I am making tomorrow and Lakeland, Lakeland, Miss Cedar says. Our boys' basketball team will be competing in their first playoff game next week, and we wish them the best of luck. We are also very proud to announce that our varsity bowling team will be sending students to state this year, and we also wish them the best of luck.
All right. Thank you, Max, Brooke. Any board members have questions for our Student Board of Education reps? Pretty thorough story and picture of what's all going on at the high school. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Max and Brooke. We'll move on in the agenda to our administrative reports. As a reminder, board members may have asked questions already privately, but can ask clarifying questions here. There are things to be on the record, so I'll turn this portion of the agenda over to Mr. Murray.
Thank you. Speaking of bowling, I might have seen a flashback Facebook post today that had Brett Waller on the bowling team. That's on today's Facebook on the school. So, administrative reports, the first up tonight is the Director of Curriculum Instruction report, and that was shared with our CNI or at our CNI, or sorry, CTP committee the other night, going through some winter assessment scores and some information pertaining to that. So, if there's any questions, Amanda Patterson is here at the CNI to discuss that. Next up is the Director of People's Services Special Education Report focusing on the second Friday enrollment count. There's a link there that has the data regarding our second Friday count that compares to our third Friday count that took place earlier this December. Amber Houska is here to answer if there are any questions. Item C is the Pine River School for Young Learners Monthly Data Report. It's got some enrollment information and some health screening information and other things from Mr. Martinovich who is here. If anybody has any questions, we're going to continue with that report. Next up is our Food Service Report, which our monthly food service report always includes participation information, board bites, those kind of things. And Laura is still here. If you have a question, here's your shot at her. Item E is the Director of Business Services Report. We've been working on preliminary staffing meetings with all the principals and department heads, some information on retirements and some other things. And Dr. Strike is here to answer questions pertaining to that. And then, finally, is Item F Superintendent's Report focuses mostly this month on activities related to the referendum. We've been very busy on that front, getting out to meet with a lot of fellowships and different groups, and just want anybody that'll have me, I'll talk to them. And so, we've been very busy with that. The mailer goes out today, went out today, and so that should be in mailboxes either tomorrow or Friday for every home in the district. And so, we're starting to gather since it seems to seem, and we've been pleased with the progress in the meeting. The presentations that we've had have been very, very positive, a lot of good questions and engaged audiences, so that's been very positive as well. I appreciate the people that have joined us with us as people learn more about the project and the referendum. So, if you have any questions about that, everybody has. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda is Committee Reports. We'll start with our Finance Human Resources Committee. The minutes from the February 14th committee meeting are provided to the board. Ron Liberty is chair and other members of the finance committee are here and available for questions. Any board members have questions for our Finance Human Resources Committee? Any questions for the Finance Human Resources Committee?
Is there any meeting minutes gonna get attached to that? Because I don't have any there attached to that.
Do you have any on this one?
Yeah, I haven't got. Do you know how many of us? I haven't got.
Okay. We'll have to get those and get those attached on there. I thought they were put on today. They were not. Good catch, Linda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get those.
I don't know if I was missing something because we never know sometimes they appear as you're asking a question. There we are.
Nope, you're right. I was looking down at CTP already, so make a note, we'll include it added. Any questions based on anything on the agenda since you don't exceed the draft minutes? Or we save that for particular items, motions later? Okay. Right. Next, I will go to Curriculum Technology People's Services Committee, our CTP committee. Attached this time are the draft minutes for the board from the February 14th committee meeting. Paul Pru is chair and other members of our CTP committee are available for questions. Any board members have questions for our CTP committee? Any board members have questions for our CTP committee? Hearing none, we will move on. Next category is unfinished business. We do not have anything slated under that category, so we'll move right to Board of Education business. First item on Board of Education business this evening is approval of the Head Start Community Assessment. The topic summary sheet was provided in advance from Ryan Martinovich with the recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Paul?
I move to approve the 2024 MAPS Head Start Self-Assessment. Tonight, I'm sorry. We recommend a motion to approve the Head Start 2023-2024 Community Assessment.
Thank you, Paul. Do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
A second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this topic or motion?
I'll just add that because Ryan's here, a number of us have been part of that for a couple of years, and it's a really long run assessment that Ryan's got going on there.
The next one.
That self-assessment. Yeah. I mean, you do a couple tiers of the different assessments, and it's very engaging and we're doing a job out there, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions from board members in regards to this motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the MAPS Head Start Self-Assessment with the topic summary sheet also provided by Ryan Martinovich with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
I have a motion to approve the 2024 MAPS Head Start Self-Assessment.
We have a motion by Ron. Do we have a second? We have a second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is in regards to Letters Training Fees. Letters is an acronym for Language Essentials for Teachers in Reading and Spelling. The topic summary sheet was provided by Amanda Patterson and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion on this topic this evening? Paul?
I have moved to recommend the approval of purchase orders. Do I have the right spot now? No.
Yes. Good. Might be.
Okay. Move to recommend the approval of purchase orders for letters training facility training from Lexia Learning Systems LLC.
Right, we have a motion by Paul, second by Chad. Any discussion or question on this motion or topic? Any discussion or question on this motion or topic? Something to share, Shannon?
I just remind the board that this is training that's tied to the Wisconsin Act 20. It's a learning initiative.
All right.
So, it's just a second for my other items that we're purchasing for the teachers and certain classes and...
Yeah, this is training. It's specifically tied to that.
Any question? Any other questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the SPIRE Reading Intervention Purchase. SPIRE is an acronym for Specialized Program Individualized Reading Excellence. We have a topic summary sheet provided from Amanda Patterson and Amber Aluska, and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. We have a motion this evening on this topic. Ron?
I have a motion to approve the purchase of SPIRE materials from EPS Learning, Special Education Full Through Class.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Paul. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic?
I guess I do.
Go ahead.
So, I can't remember the names of the material that we purchased last year from CTP, but it was certain levels and criteria and curriculum that we were purchasing prior to the last director meeting. And now, these are all stage requirement trainings. I mean, what's, I guess what's the difference between the two because we're purchasing, I mean, purchasing more stuff when we already just started something. Was it last year and maybe two years ago? I'm sorry. Days are going by so quickly.
So, I can speak to that broadly. I'll have Amanda or Amber come on up to the table. The difference is the CTP is the universal curriculum. These are a lot of interventions.
And I thought, I thought some of that stuff that we did with the other portion ones, some of the intervention.
Yep. So, over the summer, the same intervention was purchased for K4 and then also for our reading teachers at the middle school, and now we are purchasing them for the special education teachers at the middle school as well. We're upgrading our intervention materials to make sure they have the same high-quality materials that our title teachers do.
Okay. That helps. Thank you. I was just wondering because it seems like we purchased different things over here, and one plan's supposed to be better than the last plan we started, and now we're rolling out of the half.
Yeah, so we're pretty consistent with SPIRE. SPIRE is known for being one of the best interventions that's aligned with the things that are also with the science of reading and Act 20, so it's all very well aligned with it.
That's good. Thank you.
Just a clarification, this batch is being purchased out of...
Yep, this is, yep, so this is out of Special Education Full Through Dollar specific for, so our middle school special ed teachers also have those same high-quality materials. Thank you.
Board members, anyone else have any additional questions on this motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Teacher Compensation Plan Revision. The topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Kelly Strike and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion on this topic this evening? Paul?
I move to recommend the motions for revisions to the teacher compensation plan as presented.
A motion by Paul. We have a second. Second by Jaclyn. Any board members have any discussion, questions on this motion or topic? Chad?
The overtime paid for support staff, the best, this is all hours over 40, is that working hours or is that, does that include vacation and holidays?
Where are you seeing it, Chad?
Right on the top.
That's on the handbook.
Oh, that's on the handbook?
Yeah.
So, this is teacher salary compensation.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, it was mixed up with my thing.
That's okay.
Both are questions. I'll bring them next time.
Any other board members have questions on the teacher compensation plan revisions as presented and the motion provided? Call question, and all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Staff Handbooks for 2024-2025. Topic summary sheet provided by Dr. Kelly Strike and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Ron?
I have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 Support Staff and Teacher Handbooks as presented.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this topic or that motion?
It's on.
There we go, Chad. Will Kelly walk up here?
So, the language and practice has always been that if they work, let's say, work 44 hours in a week, but neither of those hours was a holiday, it was a holiday week, they got paid straight time for the 44 hours. That is a choice. It's like a district or an employer's choice by law. It has been requested every year we get staff input, they've requested that we consider overtime for any hours over 40, not just hours worked. Something we discussed and decided that that could be an adjustment we would be looking for. So, that's, that's...
Does that include vacation too? Okay, it's both. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. While Kelly's up here, any other board members with questions so we don't send her back and forth? Good for the steps, but not real practical. Go ahead, Linda.
And what about like the extra training classes in the summer? How do, how do those work? Like, let's say you have certain class, they're offering like a summer school class that they have to, are they getting paid to attend those classes that are in the summertime?
Do you mean like a professional development for a teacher?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So, we do have the workshop rate of $22 an hour for like curriculum. I don't, I would also say that like if we bring teachers in for curriculum work or require training, I don't know that we've always paid if someone did a conference in the summer that we'd always use that workshop rate if they attend a one-day conference. Something I know that, and this is Amanda's talked about as well, for example, is some of the training we have of maybe offering some stipends sometimes. We're doing that right now for the letters training rate of stipend. So, sometimes we do that as well because we can offer at least some level of compensation for the work they're doing, which is what they're doing for the training.
I was just asking, because sometimes if it's summer and they're only, they have 10-month employees, but they're getting called back to do something like a training class or something, I think it would be beneficial to reimburse them for their time. So, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions or board members on this topic or this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I'll abstain from the support staff handbook, please.
Right. Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is the CISA 9 Shared Services Contract for 2024-2025, with an attached topic summary sheet from Mr. Murray, and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Paul?
I recommend a motion to approve the CISA 9 2024-2025 Shared Services Contract as presented with a projected cost of $282,062.
We have a motion by Paul. Do we have a second?
No, second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Anything you would like to highlight? Anything you would like to highlight on there, Shannon? Or you've got that in front of you and fresh on your mind?
Yeah. So every year we go through this service program with CISA. CISA, if you're familiar, is a, is a property agency that provides services, they exclude people who cannot be provided by themselves. It's kind of like pooling your resources together. We want, so we contract out some of those. Two, two big changes. It's slightly, it's slightly higher than it's been in the past. There's been an addition to line forty-seven, which is orientation mobility teacher type, and some additional skills, psychology-based, to kind of lead some of our special needs teams. Those are the two big changes.
Hearing none, any additional questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is purchase of milk coolers. The topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Kelly Strike. Recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion? Nubs?
I want to approve the purchase of milk coolers from Strike's foot fund.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Second by Ron. Any discussion on this motion or topic? Chad?
Did we purchase two or are we buying two more? I got a little confused with this.
Two. Two in addition.
Because it says we purchased two for Kate and Perrin. I just, you didn't have to get up here.
No, I will, Daryl, Laura and I are laughing. So when we purchased two before, one had to be replaced and one we knew it was on its last legs. By the time we got here, it had to be replaced. So the two we ordered right now, we're holding out that, they'll hold on until these ones get here. That's really where we're at. Yep. I think you buy them all at the same time and then they all go out.
I was just looking, I'm like, I was saying, are we buying two or we bought two?
Bought two. Because it's federal funds, because it's not quite under $10,000, but when you put all four together, you're going to be over the $10,000, so that's why we came to approve for the addition.
Thank you, Kelly. Good question, Chad. Any additional questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda this evening is Friends of the Nell's PBU School Forest Donation for a solar power aerator. That's a topic summary sheet from Tracy Foles. Due to the fact this donation is over the $2,500 limit set in policy seventy-two thirty, this donation does come to the board separately from our consent agenda. There is a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Ron?
I take a motion to approve the donation of the solar power aerator for Friends of the School Forest valued at $5,275. And thank you very much, Friends of the School Forest.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any discussion on this motion or topic? Certainly like to echo what Ron said and thank you to our Friends of the School Forest for the donation. Any additional questions on the motion or the topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda this evening is the Personnel Report, which is regarding recruitment, resignations, retirements, et cetera. Personnel report is put together by Dr. Kelly Strike and her team. There is a recommended motion, anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Jaclyn?
I recommend a motion to approve the attached Personnel Report contingent upon release of contract for hiring and upon the satisfaction of appropriate liability damages for resignations.
Motion by Jaclyn, do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any discussion on this motion or this particular topic this evening? Any discussion from board members on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Before we, before I ask for a motion from the consent agenda, I'll ask if anyone wants anything pulled from our consent agenda to be possibly handled individually. Hearing none, I would look for a motion for our consent agenda. Kendra?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C, which include minutes of the January twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four meetings, claims, vouchers and receipts totaling $2,629,948.63 and donations totaling $1,035.
We have a motion by Kendra, we have a second. Second by Ron. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Linda?
I abstained from the January twenty-four meeting minutes.
Any additional? Brett?
I have a lot of abstain from January twenty-four meetings.
Chad?
Abstain for me.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries with no notable abstentions. Next is the items for future meetings. Purpose of this agenda item is for board members to have another forum to bring topics to the board that will make sure that we continue to look at for future meetings. Does anyone have anything to add to this list or discuss at this time to go potentially into committee or the board of the whole in the future? We have some things coming up. One more with the election, the future of Jefferson School as an example that was, is on this list. Also, a reminder of informing the community how the board operates. I'm sure as we get closer to the spring, we'll hear from our Activities Director, Chris Hahn, on other sports possibly utilizing Huddle. So those were some things that we're kind of keeping our eyes on for the future, so we'll continue there. Hearing nobody else adding anything this evening, we'll just keep monitoring those things. Reminder that tomorrow morning, radio program on Blue Jay seven thirty on every Thursday tomorrow morning, it will be Shannon and I reviewing things going on in the district and specifically highlighting the next meeting. It's on at approximately eight fifteen AM. Future meetings, we have a special board meeting on Monday, February twenty-sixth, five thirty PM in the boardroom. Our Policy Committee next meets on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, four thirty in the boardroom. Bridges Virtual Academy's Governance Board meets virtually March seventh, twelve forty-five PM. Our Head Start Policy Council meets Tuesday, March twelfth, five thirty PM, Pine River School for Young Learners. Our CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupils Services Committee next meets Wednesday, March thirteenth, four thirty PM in the boardroom. Immediately following that, but no sooner than five PM, our Finance Human Resources Committee meets. Our School Forest Advisory Meeting will be held next on Monday, March twenty-fifth, four PM, out at the Nell's PBU School Forest. We do have a referendum information session also that evening, Monday, March twenty-fifth, six PM over at Merrill High School. What is at Merrill High School, that'll be, signs will be there when you come into the main entrances, going into the middle.
Yeah, people have people come into door two. So it'll be in the spaces that are part of the project, the integration, the PLT space.
All right. Thank you. Our next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, five thirty PM, right here in the boardroom. Next I have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant, pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section nineteen point eight-five, ren-one, ren-c, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of a public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, ren-f, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data, specific person's preliminary consideration, specific personnel problems or the investigation charges against specific persons, except for, ren-b, applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to when such histories or data are involved in such problems or investigation. Purpose of the closed session is for the purpose of discussing employment and performance evaluation data, certified staff members and consider an act upon parental request for student opt-out, state assessments, including potential for a closed session to review the specifics applicable to the affected students. If discussion of such in open session would be likely to have an adverse effect upon the reputation of such students pursuant to that same section of the statute nineteen point eight-five, ren-one, ren-f. Any such closed sessions shall be immediately followed by reading, meaning an open session for the consideration and ultimately act upon parental requests. Do we have anyone willing to make that motion? Chad? We have a second. Jaclyn? Do we have a roll call on that, please, Sammy?
Jeff Krieger?
Aye.
Kendra Asensio?
Aye.
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Jaclyn Ressler?
Aye.
Val Sashbuck?
Aye.
Brett Waller?
Aye.
Linda England?
Aye.
Paul Prue?
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye. All right. This time we will clear the room, secure the room for a closed session. Thank you all for your attendance this evening.